Hello, Mr. Castor Giovanni.
Hello.
I'm going to join with Lori.
I think that's right.
Brian, do I need to record this or is it being recorded as we are doing this? Okay. Okay, so I don't need to record it like I did the previous meeting? Okay, thank you.
Hello, Mr. McAvoy. Good evening, Mr. Jibosi.
Sorry, good evening, doctors.
Good to see you. So we're just waiting for Ms. Santos and Dr. Ross. Good evening, Ms. Santos. Ms. Nolan, I think the phone might be coming from here.
You want me to mute it?
If you could mute yourself, I think it would be helpful. Does that sound better? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we're just waiting for Dr. Ross and then we'll get started. Ms. Sadowski, you have what we need for the oaths, correct? Thank you. I'm just texting Dr. Ross. I'm just going to resend her the link. All right, why don't we get started in the meantime, and she's going to be logging on. So I would like to formally convene our annual reorganization meeting. Please. Here we go. Good evening, Dr. Ross. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move on to the rest of our agenda, and we had planned to have this meeting in person, and so I was all set to tribute, so even though we're virtual, I'm going to share with you something that I received yesterday, which is my Aunt Lil Livalsi mask. And I thank you, Laney, if you're watching, and anybody from the Livalsi and Ronaldo family. Thank you so much for sharing that tribute and giving me the honor. So I think, it's hard to speak with it on. I think all of us, everybody here and anybody watching knows that Ms. Livalsi was a beloved member of our Oyster Bay community. She was 93 and a half years young, and she spent her entire life in Oyster Bay, the youngest of seven children. She was raised on West Main Street and lived there until her death. Clementine, Clementine Lil Livalsi was a beloved worker here in our Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District, and every single person who has passed through the high school truly loved Lil. She worked with us, good evening, Ms. Santos. She worked with us from 1965 to 2019. And I know that Ms. Ronaldo, I hope you're here listening and knowing that we're all sending our deepest condolences and our love to all of you. We know that Lil wanted nothing more than to return to work, and we would always welcome her with open arms. So in honor of all of our Aunt Lil, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Sadowski, I believe it is now my turn to have the oath of the Office of the Superintendent of Schools administered.
Yes, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Laura Seinfeld.
I, Laura Seinfeld.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools.
The duty of the Office of the Superintendent of Schools.
For the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
For the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you. I now turn to Ms. Sadowski to offer the oath of office to our newly elected trustee, Mr. Darren Jibosi, and welcome you officially, Mr. Jibosi.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, Mr. Jibosi, on being elected. If you could raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Darren Jibosi.
I, Darren Jibosi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Trustee of the Board of Education.
Of the Office of Trustee of the Board of Education.
For the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
For the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Jibosi. And I'll just take this moment to remind anybody who is being sworn in, we'll need to speak tomorrow about coming in and having you sign in the book here and notarized, and we'll certainly take care of that, as well as arrange for the pictures that we were going to take this evening for the calendar. I would like to now call for nominations for the Office of President.
Dr. Seinfeld, I would like to nominate Lori Kowalski for president.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Kowalski. I would now ask Ms. Sadowski to administer the oath of office to you.
I can't see her. Okay, Ms. Kowalski, repeat after me. I, Lori Kowalski.
I, Lori Kowalski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of President.
Of the Office of President.
Of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
Of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Very good, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowalski, congratulations. And I now turn the chairmanship of the meeting over to you.
Okay, now there's a call for nominations for the Office of Vice President.
Ms. Kowalski, I'd like to nominate Nancy Castor Giovanni.
Let's not second that nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So I guess the motion carries.
Okay.
So Ms. Sadowski, will you administer the oath of office for Ms. Castor Giovanni?
Yes, Ms., can you turn the cameras?
Can you not see her? Oh, that's not good.
Thank you. Repeat after me, please. I, Nancy Castor Giovanni.
I, Nancy Castor Giovanni.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
That I will fully discharge the duties of.
Faithfully discharge the.
Oh, faithfully, sorry, this dog's barking.
Yes, it's okay. The Office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
The Office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
For the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
For the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Castor Giovanni.
Thank you.
My phone's calling. Okay, now onto appointments. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following appointments on the consent agenda as listed. Do I have a motion? Do I have to go through 6.1 also, Dr. Seinfeld, or just stop?
No, it goes all the way to the middle of page six, Ms. Kowalski.
It does, okay.
But then after this action, then we'll need to have the district clerk and the district treasurer have their oaths administered. But you can move on all the way through the middle of page six, if you'd like.
Okay, yes, all the way on to the middle of page six. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mrs. Nolan, if you could reflect in the minutes that it's 6.1 through 6.30 that was moved rather than.
Yes, I have that in my agenda, Ms. Sadowski.
All right, it is the oath now.
Okay.
Are there any questions? So now let's go on to.
Mrs. Kowalski, I have to administer.
Oh, okay.
And Ms. Neinsling.
Mrs. Nolan?
I, Ms., I, Margaret.
I, Margaret Owen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of district clerk.
Of the Board of Education.
The Office of District Clerk of the Board of Education.
Of the Oyster Bay.
Of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And now I have to administer. Kowalski to Mrs.
Congratulations, Ms. Nolan.
Thank you.
Ms. Nolan, if you can unmute. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm hearing a lot of people unmute. Maybe that'll help.
It's better now, I think, that it was, I think it's, does it sound better now?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Is Ms. Neinsling here?
Ms. Neinsling is here.
I'm here.
Hi.
Hi.
Right hand, I, Linda Neinsling.
I, Linda Neinsling.
Do solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Office of the Treasurer.
Office of District Treasurer.
For the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
For the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Neinsling.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowalski?
Okay, on to designations. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following resolutions on the consent agenda as a whole. And that goes seven. Can I go seven, eight, all the way down to?
It goes to 34 on top of, on page 11.
34 on top of page 11. Should I ask if there are any questions first or go for the motion first?
Well, first you take a motion first, and then a second, and then any discussion before, before action.
I just want to make sure. Okay, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, so motion carries.
I think you still need, at that point, Ms. Kowalski, all in favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so that's the end of the reorganization meeting. And we'll start the business meeting. And I'll turn this over to Dr. Seinfeld.
First, we have comments and reports from the Board of Education. I believe that Ms. Santos will still be, I don't know if you guys discussed that or if you want to discuss that now. Would Ms. Santos still be the person who would read correspondence to the, and communication to the Board of Education? We assume so, for tonight at least.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Santos? I think you might be on mute.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
There is some correspondence.
Yes, we have correspondence from Sabrina Giardina. It's an email, the class of 2020 use funds. We have a, one from Kathy Harrigan regarding vaccines. We have one from Sabrina Manna Kautu, is that right? Digital learning. We have one from Garcia Salo regarding school in the fall. We have one from Grace Serby regarding the budget process. We have one from Amanda Harding regarding cleaning products. We have one from Jamie Fitzsimmons regarding accommodations for working parent screen time. We have one from Consider Galasso regarding senior account. We have another one from Consider Galasso regarding graduation. And they all were via email.
So Ms. Kowalski, will you all turn to my report? So while it seems like quite a while ago, we had two amazing moving up ceremonies at the elementary school. I thank Ms. McElwee and Dr. Vacchio and all of our staff for all of their hard work to plan for both virtual ceremonies within the Google classrooms. And they're amazing and celebratory drive-throughs, drive-through celebrations supported by our elementary PTA. So they were wonderful, and I so appreciate everybody's support in this very challenging time to celebrate our children and their moving up to the next school. I believe everybody is aware that we, after much research and much discussion and much input from students and families, our Oyster Bay High School graduation will take place this Saturday with a rain date of Sunday. Keep your fingers crossed, right now it looks like it will be hot, but clear and sunny, so we are looking good for the 18th and 19th. I think you know how challenging it was to plan for a graduation that honors our amazing class of 2020 and to meet as many needs and requests as possible. So the outcome is what I think is going to be absolutely a beautiful day, and it may actually be the best graduation in Long Island. Because of our size, we are able to grant the students' wishes of having some of the day, all of them together. And that is at 8:00 in the morning. And because of our size, and by the way, in counting toward the 150-person limit as per state guidelines, everybody counts. Administrators, security, et cetera. So because of the size of our class, we were able to, of 114 students, so the students will come in together at 8:00 in the morning. And there will be several activities for the class together, with, of course, appropriate social distancing and face coverings as warranted for pictures, et cetera. Then there will be a community walk, otherwise known as a parade, but we don't call it officially a parade, down Main Street as a group. And I think you know that we've worked, or Ms. Lasher has worked closely with both the county and the town of Oyster Bay. I'm sure you have seen the flyers, but the entire community is welcome to join, beginning at 8:45, to cheer on the class of 2020 as they march in their caps and gowns from Oyster Bay High School to fight, all the way down to Fireman's Field, our traditional homecoming route. Then we will have three ceremonies. Each student, it's divided alphabetically. 10:00 is for A to Grassi. 12:00 is for the rest of the G's to Pantina. And 2:00 is for Peone through Zavala. And at that point, every, every student will be permitted to have up to two guests with him or her. I need to tell you that I know that some of you know this more personally, that the input that we receive from our students, as well as a few key parents, as well as many staff members, I really think is going to be an incredibly special day, and we're very excited to be able to do this on July 18th. What I would like to discuss with the board at this moment, if you can, is which board members would like to come and attend which of the ceremonies? And which Board of Education member would like to deliver remarks to the class of 2020? I think you know that because we're very limited, having up to three members of the Board of Education at any one ceremony would, will really help us to, with our numbers and staying under the 150 when we count in staff, including security, custodial, administration, et cetera. So the first graduation ceremony for letters A through G, I am assuming that Mr. Cronin would like to attend, since he does have a senior who begins with a C, and.
Yes, I would, thank you.
And would you like to speak at that graduation?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. So Ms. Lasher had the idea that perhaps for the 12:00 graduation, which includes the letter M, that Mr. McAvoy, who has a senior living in his home for right now, might want to do the same thing for that graduation. So Mr. McAvoy, would you be, well, would the board like Mr. McAvoy to be the attendee and speaker at the 12:00?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And.
And then we'll go back.
Dr. Seinfeld, one quickly. The cooperation and creativity that went into this was unmatched anywhere that I could see on Long Island. And when I look at what other schools did, no one comes close to satisfying as many people, whether it's parents or students, as our plan. It was just, it was really a great, it's a great plan.
That's so heartwarming to hear, I agree. And the number of hours of conversations and communications, and it all hopefully will come together beautifully. I really appreciate those kind words. So before we go back to who will attend which, Ms. Kowalski, I, I'm not sure. Now, I know that Ms. Dando, while not on the board, this is an unusual year because she was on the board for this graduating class. So all eight board members, Mr. Jibosi, of course, as the new board member, of course, is, is more than welcome to attend. My last conversation with Ms. Dando, but it was a few weeks or so ago, is she doesn't know if she could attend because she, she works on Saturdays. So I don't know if she can, last I heard she cannot. So we do need somebody to speak at the 2:00 graduation, and then I'll need to know who you, which board members would like to attend which of the three ceremonies.
Dr. Seinfeld, would Ms. Kowalski like to speak at the last one?
Well, I'm not sure, due to the quarantine, whether I'll be able to. Because it'll be with, it'll be within 14 days, and we just came back from Ohio. And unfortunately, Governor Cuomo just declared four hours ago that anybody from Ohio has to quarantine. So I'm thinking maybe either if you or John want to do it, or maybe Ms. Santos would like to do it. I said that Robin isn't going to be able to make it, because that would have been a nice way to, you know, end the year.
Ms. Santos would like to do it?
Unfortunately, I am not going to be able to do it. So, Mr. Cronin, being you're the president, would you want to do both?
I can do both.
The one and the lady one?
Lady one?
Sure.
And the question is, do you guys both want to have the, you know, well, we can discuss that later, preparing the graduation speech, whether you want to have them the same, whether you want them different from the Board of Education?
Yeah, perhaps Mr. McAvoy and Mr. Cronin could compare notes on that. So, Mr. Cronin, if you'd like, we could see if Ms. Dando's plans have changed and if she could do the third one, but if not, we'll, we'll. And right now, the way the graduation program, we needed to know, and we had to get it to the printer, so we just had a member of the Board of Education. So for the 10:00 graduation, Mr. Cronin will speak. Will anybody else be attending that graduation? 12:00, Mr. McAvoy speaking. Will any other Board of Education member be attending that one?
I'll go to that one, Dr. Seinfeld.
And the 2:00, Mr. Cronin speaking, unless Ms. Dando can. Will anybody else be able to attend that graduation? Okay. Well, thank you. If anybody's plans change and you are able to join us, please feel free to let me know, and I'll let Ms. Lasher know. But I will give her that information so that she could work around that. I think that those of you, well, I know those of you who are on our district-wide reentry committee know how hard we've been working to plan for multiple scenarios with the goal of having all students back in school safely in the fall. I thank our members of the Board of Education who serve on that committee with us, as well as all of our administrators, teachers, support staff, doctor, nurse. And we've worked through a number of issues, and we feel confident that we have multiple scenarios that we will be able to meet, depending on what we hear from the governor the first week of August. I've been sending the Board of Education regular updates in terms of the guidance that we received yesterday, today, and what's expected to be received tomorrow regarding the plan that we need to submit. The plan will need to be submitted by the end of the month, July 17. The plan will need to be submitted by the end of the month, July 31st, although then, based on the metrics of infection in our region, the governor will ultimately be making the decision on whether, in fact, we can open. There are a number of legal questions and considerations that we will discuss in executive session, but I did want to let the Board of Education know that tomorrow, we have another district-level committee, and we will be discussing a number of items, including a survey that will be going out to the community by the end of the week. We didn't want to send it out without the guidance from the state to make sure we knew exactly what our options would be. I will tell you that one aspect of this that will be included in the survey, and I think it's going to end up being a very critical issue, is transportation. So one of the items on the survey is going to be about whether families intend to use our transportation, and whether they would be willing to forego transportation if it helps us to be able to plan for a safe opening with the social distancing that will be required. I would also like to share that a few of the questions that came into the Board of Education, and if any of those families are listening, we are following all of the guidance documents. We have subcommittees, including one that's working specifically on the needs of special populations, including students with disabilities, as well as English language learners. We are taking all precautions. I know that there was some concern about the safety of students returning to the school, but we are working diligently to be sure that we have the appropriate furniture, the appropriate PPE, and the appropriate spacing and procedures within the buildings. I will also share with you that there was a question about the cleaning products that are being used, and I'm just going to ask Mr. Cipriani to briefly comment on that, since that was one of the community's questions. Mr. Cipriani?
Sorry, my mute button was having an issue. So yeah, so all of the products that we use are EPA-approved, and there is something called MSDS, or material safety data sheets, that all these products have. We use something called a Spray Pack Aerosol, which is a spray disinfectant that we use on knives and on hard surfaces. We also use a cleaner, which is a germicide called Birix, that is a green product, and it's supposed to kill 99.9% of germs and viruses. We also use Liquid Comet in the bathrooms, that is particularly good for some of the bacteria that we have in the bathrooms. We do that on a regular basis. We also do the walls and the floors, any surface that's touched, all that gets done on a regular basis as well. And of course, we'll do that even more often when we return, when students return. We've also ordered Purell dispensers for each and every classroom, so you'll see that in the fall. We have alcohol wipes in all the classrooms as well. And, you know, we're staying on top of all of these products and making sure that the areas for our students and our faculty are as clean and as safe as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Cipriani. So as I mentioned, there are a number of legal issues that we do need to discuss with the Board of Education in executive session, but if there are any questions or comments about this planning that you would like to discuss publicly, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Yeah, Dr. Seinfeld, I, oh, go ahead, Ms. Kowalski.
Oh, I was just wondering about the masks. Have you ordered masks, and what kind, like for students who may not have them, or they might forget them?
Yes, and as you saw in the guidance, we have, yes, the answer is yes, we have ordered masks in the case that students need them, and in the case that staff needs them in accordance with the guidance that has been provided.
Yeah, could I also add that we've ordered N95 masks, we've ordered face shields, because there could be some situations where those special types of masks might be needed.
Thank you.
Dr. Seinfeld, I am on the committee, I know we've been talking about a lot of different things, but we have until the end of the month, that's 17 days. We will definitely have all of our plans ready to go, whether it's going to be back to school, if we are back to school and something happens, then we go back to the virtual learning, or we're not even going to go that, we'll just go with the virtual learning. We're going to be ready to go in 17 days, no matter which way we go, correct?
Absolutely, and I'd just like to point out that Mr. Cipriani just spoke about the work that he has done with the principals and with Ms. Neinsling in terms of all of the cleaning supplies and all of the materials that are needed. Similarly, Dr. Mulhall has worked very closely with each of our principals and continues to do so, and we're also discussing this with our academic committee in terms of the actual digital learning, based on what we experienced in the spring, based on the feedback that we received from both surveys, the secondary and the elementary survey, with the goal of safely having all students back in the school together, as long as it's safe to do so. And as you probably saw from the guidance documents we received, this is a long answer to the short question, a shorter answer would be yes, Mr. Cronin, but basically, three separate scenarios, all-in, some type of hybrid or blended model with reducing the density, or if needed, and we hope it's not returning to all digital. But we're working very, very diligently toward reopening for all students safely in the fall, in person.
Thank you.
Dr. Seinfeld, in the event of all digital, and trying to have maximum engagement, maximum live engagement, what is the plan as it stands now?
The plan as it stands now is that, as appropriate for the age level, looking differently for kindergarteners than for 12th graders, that the digital learning would look much more like a traditional school day than what we experienced in the spring. And that is based on the feedback from students, from staff, as well as from parents. You should know that the survey that was conducted, based on the last three Wednesdays of the high school schedule, with the three pilot schedules, is that all constituent groups felt that the more traditional schedule, following the more traditional day, was the one that received the best feedback.
I agree.
Dr. Seinfeld, as far as getting the kids back to the classroom, did we order everything we need as far as desks are concerned, those dividers, those shield dividers, like for the desktops? Like, are we at a point now that we put all our orders in?
We have until the 20th to get all the orders in that we need, but we have ordered the desks that we discussed at the committee meeting.
Okay.
Meeting for the guidance that just came out, and I'm sure you saw the part, I know you read it, where it talked about six-foot distance or dividers, and then it talks about the use of a mask when you cannot socially distance, but we're doing our best to look at how we can use all spaces across the buildings, all staff that's available, to maintain the best social distance that we can.
Are we, are we going to go with the dividers, though?
Yes, yes. And that was a discussion just today in terms of which ones. You know that there were ones that were being marketed earlier that we've then found out did not meet OSHA guidelines, so that is something that Mr. Cipriani and Ms. Neinsling are working with the principals to make sure that we have everything we need. Yes.
And we think we can get them in time for opening.
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Seinfeld?
One last question, I'm sorry, and then Nancy can take over. Do we know how much space is deficient at this point?
We know that we are in good shape at Vernon to do the six-foot distancing. We're very close to a plan, based on today's meetings, with the same at Roosevelt, and we're looking very closely at the high school, but we're optimistic that using various spaces and a lot of creativity, that we will be able to accommodate all students with social distancing in the fall. There may be some modifications to schedules needed, but I will tell you that, and I'll say this right up front, and I hope that community members are listening, there will be consequences in terms of, not everything will be the same exact program as it has been, in terms of specials at the elementary school, in terms of movement, in terms of club. So we do want to get everybody back in, and when I talk about cost or consequence, I don't mean to sound punitive, it will not be the traditional Oyster Bay East Norwich graduation, Oyster Bay East Norwich education within the school day and beyond the school day as we know it, but our goal is to get students back in, and we know that the community, we believe that the vast majority of the community really wants students back in school in the fall. And I'll have more information for you specifically at our meeting tomorrow afternoon, and then I'll, of course, inform the rest of the board how tomorrow's reentry meeting went by way of the letter later in the week.
So Dr. Seinfeld, just trying to get into the nitty-gritty, I'm trying to envision this, so if we have a classroom, but we've spaced out the desks for six feet apart, so we potentially have a classroom and a satellite classroom to seat all these children, so what, the teacher is teaching in one class, who's in the other class, or is the teacher going, like, how would we actually educate the children?
We would be leveraging instructional technology across that space, and we would also be leveraging the staff that we have, which we will likely need to look at some staffing additions to support that.
So you mean the teacher may be teaching in one classroom with a camera, and then the children in the satellite classroom, who are being supervised by aides or monitors, would be watching the video of the teacher?
That's one of the models that we're looking at, yes.
Okay, great, thanks. And Dr. Seinfeld, if, so for example, if we have kids that are going to be out for two weeks because of COVID, or they might have had an exposure, and they have to be out, we don't want them to miss school, right? No one, even if they have to do it online. Will you have cameras in these classrooms so that these students can see the teacher and participate in the class? Because otherwise, you could imagine that some of these students, they could be exposed one day, have to quarantine for 14, go back to school, and something else happens, and they're going to miss a lot of school, and I want to try to avoid those, that type of stuff?
This is something that we'll discuss in executive session, because there are some legal aspects to this that I'd like us to discuss after our meeting in executive session. Last, but certainly not least, under my report, our academic committee has met four times thus far, and we have discussed, as I'm just reviewing the information I provided in the Board of Education letter, the bottom line is, our committee is very focused on how to give students the best opportunities within the class day and beyond, and how to always put our district and our students in the best possible light. In that regard, we have discussed opportunities that are currently available and possible additions in student research and competitions. We've talked a great deal about the digital learning, exactly what we were just talking about, and as well as the pilot that was conducted in Oyster Bay High School. We have discussed the elementary survey on digital learning. We've talked about communication with the community, about program enhancements, as well as the importance of participating in state tests. We talked about a new template for the district website, which we're scheduled to have the Board of Education preview at our August meeting. We have discussed ways to more publicly recognize student achievement, including possibly an academic Hall of Fame. We've reviewed our ratings on external sites such as GreatSchools.org, and how we could work to increase our ratings, including reviews, as well as the metrics that go beyond, behind the scores. We've discussed academic awards, and we've talked about bringing, having a workshop, conversation about that in the fall, and also discussing follow-up with our policy committee. And of course, we have discussed digital learning and planning for the fall, as well as what the best options might be if we had to do an alternate day or an alternate midweek schedule, which we hope we do not have to do, but it is part of our planning. Our next committee meeting will be held on Monday, the 20th. So I don't know if anybody else from either the, well, the reentry committee, a lot of people chimed in, I don't know if anybody from the academic committee would like to share any additional information with the rest of the Board of Education on our committee's work.
No, I think you've covered it, I think we have a lot of work to do in all these areas. I think taking the, right, you know, taking the state tests is obviously a really important aspect of raising any of our reviews on Great Schools and Niche, or whatever it is, but those state exams, you know, we need people to take them in order to raise those ratings. And I think really, the online software, how we would handle schooling, if we have half the kids in school, is going to be an issue, how we're going to handle that. But I think they're all things we can work through, and I think the meetings have been really productive.
Thank you. That concludes my report, Ms. Kowalski.
Okay, great. So now we'll move on to the approval of minutes. The workshop meeting on 5/5/20, 5/26, the business meeting on 5/26/20, the work session 6/2/20, and the business meeting on 6/16/20. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries, any questions? Okay, on to the business facilities report.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. Just wanted to give a quick update on some of our summer projects. Our turf field project is moving along very nicely. They've taken care of the soil, their soil testing has been done. Right now, they're in the process of creating the drainage around the field, which is really pretty remarkable to watch and see how they do that. And, you know, right now, they're basically curving out around the track area, they're putting the pipes in, they're putting the gradient in so that the water, everything drains, so it's pretty remarkable to see what they're doing, and we have a great company in Land Tech doing it, so. And the weather's been cooperating, too, so everything's moving along very well with the turf field. The high school cafeteria ceiling and lighting project, right now, they're completing the abatement on that, and that's also moving along according to schedule. We have the casework at Vernon for the cabinetry and the flooring, and that, again, is also having their abatement done, which was actually completed today. And we're also working on the West Side Boiler Project, so the high school will be able to have gas, which should save us some utility costs next year. So everything's moving along well. Additionally, the 2020-21 district-wide safety plan is on the website for a 30-day public comment period. Thank you.
Mr. Cipriani, did they give you a projected date of when the turf field may be done and the bleachers installed?
They are telling me definitely September, and I'm hoping earlier in the month and later, but I don't want to say positively yet.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, on to personnel actions. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following professional personnel and civil service personnel resolutions as listed, and I think that goes 1.1 all the way down to page 20. Am I right to five? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Kowalski, too, Dr. Seinfeld, are all our positions filled with all our retirements?
Yes, they are at this point, and thank you so much if you, yes, they are. And at this moment, I would love the opportunity to say a few words of, about a few of the positions that the Board of Education just approved. 3.2, Keegan Harris, social studies teacher, replacing Mr. Brown. Keegan comes to us with a bachelor's from Adam Astor. Keegan comes to us with a bachelor's from, at a master's degree from Oswego, and has experience both in teaching, as well as in technology and innovation. She also comes to us with coaching experience and teaching experience in both Smithtown and Half Hollow Hills. Ryan Towers, social studies teacher, replacing Mr. Barbaccia, who retired, comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Salve Regina University, a master's from Mercy, as well as 13 years of teaching experience, the most nine recently in the Cold Spring Harbor Schools. So we welcome two members to our social studies department. 3.9, Richard Geiger, welcome as our physical education teacher, replacing Mr. Brush. Mr. Geiger comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Springfield College, a master's degrees, a master's degree from Stony Brook, seven years of teaching experience, most recently at the Dwight School in New York City, and as well as extensive experience in coaching. So we welcome Richard, and congratulations. And last but not least, 3.14 on the agenda, our new Mandarin teacher, a 0.2 new position for our new program. We welcome Hui Hui Jiang, certified in Mandarin, holds two master's degrees, one from Binghamton and one from Hofstra, and she has experience teaching both in New York and in Philadelphia. So we're so excited about starting our new program, and we welcome her to our World Languages Department, and we welcome all of our new teachers to the absolute best district in Rhode Island. So, thank you, Ms. Kowalski.
Mrs. Kowalski, I had a question.
Yep.
So, you know, we stated earlier that specials and other types of services might not look, at least the start of this year, as they had in the past. So, you know, you brought up 3.9, Richard Geiger, and he sounds like a remarkable candidate, or hire, I should say, but if physical education is not going to look or might not be as used, it sounds like gym and other functions like it, where kids are gathering so closely at such groups. My question is, can Richard be used, or other gym teachers be used for other things? Used for monitors, used for other things during the school year? It seems if gym is going to be limited to spending $73,000 on a new gym teacher, while also making other hires, we contradict each other. And again, this is just for my inquiry.
Yeah, I would love to jump in. So our physical, first of all, we do have requirements in physical education, and our physical education teachers will adapt their curriculum, as they did this spring, to meet the mandates and to meet the needs of our students. In response to teaching out of certification, there are legal ramifications in terms of teachers' areas of certification, but we also understand that the state is looking at perhaps relaxing some of the guidance so that teachers could work some parts of a day outside of their area of expertise or certification, but we do not have that guidance yet. But physical education and health are important parts of our curriculum. They're required, and it's not a matter of not having physical education. It's a matter of doing it differently.
Ms. Kowalski, I have one more question.
Sure.
Just maybe to Dr. Seinfeld. 3.16, Jacqueline Algia, she's a new teacher. Did we forget her?
Oh, you're absolutely right. I am so sorry. I don't know if Jacqueline is not here. I apologize. I will report back with her bio. I didn't have that prepared. I thank you, Mr. Cronin, and I apologize for that. I think the Board of Education knows that in the backup, in your personnel backup, are everybody's resumes and their cover letters. So if Jacqueline is listening, we do honor you, we do welcome you, and thank you, Mr. Cronin, for pointing that out. I do appreciate it.
Dr. Seinfeld, so what kind of guidance do you think may come from the state in regards to staff performing other duties? I mean, the staff is our most important resource in the building, and are you saying there's been no guidance whatsoever so far?
There was some conversation at the Board of Regents meeting, if you listened in on that, what's called incidental teaching. So typically, and I'm going to need Ms. Sadowski to chime in on this, or tell us if this is more executive session, but how many periods of a day or how many minutes of a day somebody is allowed to teach outside of their certification area. But I have not yet seen the guidelines change on that, and I believe that the Board of Education, Board of Education, the Board of Regents is looking at that rule around incidental assignments. Ms. Sadowski, did I answer your question, Mr. McAvoy?
Yes, I was just looking for public information, not, nothing, you know.
Yeah.
You have it right, Dr. Seinfeld.
Thank you.
Okay, so are there any other questions? Okay, so that motion carries. I think I forgot to say that. On to special services.
I think you asked for the vote on the motions. We were in dis- You asked for a motion and a second. I don't think that there was action.
No, you know what happened? She did, so Ms. Kowalski, if you don't mind a little feedback, I think what you have to reverse is any discussion and then take the vote. I think what you did there was, and it's your first meeting, but I think what you did was you took the vote and then opened it for discussion. Ms. Nolan, did you record the actual vote?
I didn't, I didn't, Dr. Seinfeld, but I did note how Mrs. Kowalski did it, so I do note that she did it the opposite, but it works the same way. I don't know the end of it.
Do we still need a vote?
I still think she would say all those in favor.
Okay.
And then, then you'll be good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so we just, let me get that straight again, because unfortunately I had an interruption.
You actually should ask opposed, though. You should ask opposed.
Yeah, you're right. Is anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries, because sometimes you can't tell. You're right, Mr. McAvoy. So I just want to make sure that I get this right again. So I read the motion, a second. Then do I ask for questions?
Then questions, comments, and then you ask for the vote.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
On to special services. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following special services resolutions as listed. And that goes to just the next page, B, to B. Do I have a motion? Motion. Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business, hold on, shh, sorry. New business. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following new business resolutions as listed. And that goes down to seven, let's see, all the way down to I on page 23. Do I have a motion?
So I'll move.
Second? Second, any?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Kowalski, I have two, actually. This goes to Mr. Cipriani, I guess. The playground at Roosevelt, will that be completed before the beginning of school year?
Mr. Cipriani, you're muted.
I apologize. Construction is due to begin in August on that playground, and it should be a pretty quick project.
Okay. And then my second question, you can go right on to that one. How much money have we spent? I know I've been on the board going on my sixth year, and every year, we spend thousands upon thousands of dollars to redo the bricks. How much money are we spending on these bricks? I mean, this year it's 50, $64,000, I think. The last couple of years was a couple hundred thousand. Is there any way we can, I know at one point, somebody came in and gave us the whole price of redoing it, but it seems like each year we're dumping, you know, $60,000, $70,000 a year to re-point bricks.
Well, we have a transfer to capital in our budget line. We budget $100,000 in our budget line every year. You know, some years it's 35, some years it's 90. But we've made very good progress, and, you know, we don't see it as a huge expense going forward. You know, it's basically shoring up some of the older parts of the building, you know, possibly doing some plastering where some of the water might have gone in between the concrete on the outside and has gotten on the inside. So I think it's a good preventative maintenance aspect to have that in the budget. And it's something, you know, for our district and the age of our buildings, it's not an extraordinary expense or anything unusual. It's more of a maintenance type of thing.
Okay. And just on, Ms. Kowalski, sorry, on I, how much did we settle with Hendrickson?
So for Hendrickson, we're going to pay 48.5% of June, of April through the June bill, the remainder of the March bill. So we're going to save approximately $500,000, and we're going to spend, for the remainder of those months, it's about $600,000. So the net savings will be about $500,000.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Kowalski, you're muted right now.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to discussion.
I could take that if you'd like, Ms. Kowalski. As per our board policy on policies, any policy that is new goes on for a first reading. This has already been reviewed and vetted through the District Policy Committee. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or concerns about policy 7315, acceptable use remote learning. It's enclosed in your packet. If not, we will have it on for the next meeting for adoption. Okay. Board of Ed Retreat, Board of Education Retreat. So each summer, we have had a Board of Education Retreat, which is attended by the Board of Education, by Dr. Mulhall, Mr. Cipriani, and myself, as well as our district attorney, to do a number. It's really about the board's learning and the board's thinking for the upcoming school year. Typically, our attorney has joined us to provide legal updates. Again, it's about the Board of Education's learning and planning, about the goal-setting process, et cetera. So my first question to the board is, do you want to have a retreat this summer? And if the answer to that is yes, any thoughts on how we can accomplish that and still maintain the safety and the distancing that we would want to, to keep each other safe?
Yes, I think we should have one. I believe, actually, the venue that we normally have is quite spacious, and I think if we, if you recall, there are two tables, and we could easily spread out among those two tables, and I think it'd be safe spacing.
Yes, I agree. I think that that looks fine. I mean, unless guidance changes and COVID, you know, gets much higher, and we might have to go outside someplace. But as long as we can still eat inside, we could definitely spread out six feet in that room. So I agree. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody who doesn't want to have a retreat? Okay.
Yeah. So, Ms. Sadowski, if it's okay with you, I'll speak to you in the morning, and we'll look at your calendar and see if there are a few dates, and then I'll put them out to the Board of Education, either by email or in this week's board letter, and we'll get ourselves a date, okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. Board, building walkthroughs as per board policy and past practice, we typically pick a date in late August to do walkthroughs to see how our facilities are looking, hopefully for the return for in-person learning. So we can either pick a date for that now, or we could do that at the August meeting, Ms. Kowalski. It's really, I'm wondering out loud if it might make sense to hold the selection of the date for our next meeting, so that we'll have a better sense of where we might be in terms of both of our, both reopening and our facility projects. Would that make sense to you?
That's fine with me, because I don't know whether I could pick a date right now. I mean, it would be much easier if it's a little bit later to pick a date.
Okay.
Does everybody else feel like that? I just want to make sure.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
So if everybody has their calendars at our next meeting, and just know that we typically come together just before the schools reopen. So, okay?
Okay, so, go ahead.
Just before we reconvene, I just want to say thank you to the board for the past year. It was a very interesting and tough year. Thank you to Lori for always being by my side with doing things for me and getting things done and stuff. So I want to thank the board, and congratulations, and good luck to Ms. Kowalski and Ms. Castro Giovanni.
And I would like to just jump in, if you don't mind, Ms. Kowalski, just to say that the partnership between the Board of Education President and the Superintendent of Schools is something that's really critical to all of us. It really affects the entire running of the district and Mr. Cronin. It has been mostly a joy, but in all seriousness, a real honor to work with you, and I thank you for taking the calls, the texts, the emails, all hours of the day, night, weekend, especially during crises. So thank you for always being strong and being calm, and trying to help me keep a sense of humor, even through some really challenging times. I will miss working with you in that role, but look forward to our continued work together. So thank you.
And thank you to your staff, too, Dr. Seinfeld, and yourself.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you, too, Todd, for serving us really well this past year, and really thinking things through, and always looking out for the best interest of the kids. I think it was really helpful, and I hope I can do just as well as you did last year, because you really did a great job for us.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion now to reconvene to executive session?
Sure.
I believe, Ms. Kowalski, to say for the two reasons listed on the agenda, for the public's sake, for both personnel and legal.
Personnel and legal. Yep, to reconvene to executive session for personnel and legal.
To anybody who is listening in the community, thank you for joining us. Please stay healthy, stay well, and we'll see you at our next meeting. Thank you. And the board there, you got a second code for our exec.
Yep, okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Wait, do we have to do a motion to adjourn or no?